All right. Okay, I'd like to call the Macomb City Council to order, please. If you please, those of you who join us here with City Hall and with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just.
Thank you. If the clerk would call a roll, please.
Mike Wayland?
Here.
John Vezzi?
Here.
Annette Carper?
Here.
Tom Cook?
Present.
Gail Carper?
Here.
Tammy Lee Brown Edwards?
Here.
Dennis Moon?
Here.
Okay, seven present.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Counsel, before you is the consent agenda and a motion is in order.
Move to adopt is published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Wayland?
Aye.
Vezzi?
Aye.
A. Carper?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
G. Carper?
Aye.
Brown Edwards?
Aye.
Moon?
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak to the counsel under the public comment section of tonight's Anyone for a public comment? All right, hearing none. Under departmental quarterly reports, we had the fire and police at our last meeting, and we have Alice Ortman on the line with us. Alice, do you have a report you'd like to give us from Public Works tonight?
I do, thank you. It's been a pretty busy quarter for Public Works. We started out fighting snow and ended the quarter repairing water main breaks as the ground started to thaw. We've kind of done everything in between. Our water and wastewater treatment plant operators were on their emergency schedules for most of the quarter. They're just actually going back to normal schedules starting today. So that'll be nice to be able to catch up on routine maintenance and other items at both plants. We're been busy planting trees. We got some grants, and so Skip has been out planting a lot of trees, and I think we're pretty much done with that for the grant, at least. We've been doing our, kind of our spring cleanup at all locations, vehicle maintenance, street sweeping. The yardway side is up and going, and we've already started grinding brush and things for use by the Public Works Department for mulching different areas. We've got a bunch of grant applications in process. As you may have heard, we're trying to get a grant to pay for the proposed well at the water plant, which would be a backup to the existing well. We're applying for a grant for the $3-plus million for the wastewater treatment plant upgrades. We're applying for grants for water main improvements again this year. Then we were notified that we got $370,000 from the state, and we're looking at the best use of that money to try to accomplish some projects that have been kind of put on hold here in the city. So we'll see how that goes. Other than that, I think that kind of sums up the quarter for us. If you have any questions about my report, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Under wastewater, you'll notice that we treated 119 million gallons, and underwater pumped into the system, we made 50, almost 52 million gallons. Does that not show the severity of the problem with our system that feeds into the wastewater plant? Or is that about what?
No, it absolutely does. It absolutely does show that we have a pretty bad inflow and infiltration problem in our system. We can take care of some of that with sewer lining, which we've been doing on an annual basis, I think, for years. That helps. Looking for cross connections helps. There's a lot to be done to try to get rid of that. That would help decrease our wastewater treatment costs a lot, but it's, it costs a lot of money to do those repairs, so there's a balance.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I just brought it up so the council and the public will be aware that there is quite a problem in existence.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
What kind of repairs would you be talking about to fix that?
We would do, where possible, we would line the sewers, where they invert a liner into the sewer, and they cook it, expand it, cook it, and it forms to the sewer. And that's a no dig, very non-intrusive method of repairing sanitary sewers. In locations where you're too badly disintegrated to be able to do that, we would have to dig them up and actually replace them. Manholes are a source of infiltration. Replacing castings, maybe lining manholes is a way to reduce that number. Also, I don't know if this has ever been looked at, but some communities have cross connections between storm sewers and their sanitary sewers, and those cross connections need to be eliminated if they have not already been. And that would take a lot of water out. The unfortunate part, and it's not a part that the city can really address easily, is the services to the homes and the buildings. Those are also a good source of infiltration, and there you would have to rely on the homeowner to replace their service or implement some kind of a program to line or replace services for them.
Alderman Carper, we do have an extensive report we had on infiltration and inflow done. It's probably been close to maybe six years ago or so. Does that sound right, Alderman Moon?
Yeah.
And it had a detailed analysis of that and cost estimates. We're talking millions of dollars to see substantial improvements in that. But we can make sure we get you a copy of that report if you'd like, Gail.
Okay, yeah, I'll get it. You've got enough to do. I just wrote it down. I'll get it from Melanie. Thank you.
Sure. I think I heard someone else chime in with a question or comment for Public Works Director.
Yes, Your Honor, this is Annette.
Go ahead.
I have a few things, Alice, just for my information. I have a few questions for you. In the wastewater section here, the one SSO, what is an SSO? Maybe with one SSO, U Drive force main due to broken air release valve?
It's a standard fair sewer overflow. I apologize for not spelling that out.
Okay, I'm just one of those people that likes to know what acrimenium means. Okay. And then I was curious, under the water section, where is the boil order?
Oh, gosh.
Those would probably be due to...
I don't recall right off the top of my head. I'm sorry. I can look that up and let you know.
No, not at all. I just was curious. No, I was just curious. And then when we get street cleaning, I've always wondered, how is that? Is that something that is scheduled? How does that occur?
The two sweeper operators go out, and they've got set routes that they follow. And I think it's not on a strict time schedule because you don't know exactly how fast you can make it through any given route. It depends on the amount of debris and things like that. But they do have set routes that they follow, and they just kind of work their way through the system. If there's areas that we get phone calls on because there's a need to send them out there ahead of time or earlier, we do that as well on occasion.
Okay, great. And then just one more question or observation, I guess. I know that after one of those big torrential rains, how deep it was down at the bottom there of North Randolph Street?
Yes.
And so I just was looking for some feedback about that. And that was, is it generally that deep? Or is it just, is it because our storm sewers are unable to deal with that kind of water?
Right.
What happens there?
Well, that rain last week was maybe a little bit of a combination of both, but what was causing the big problem on North Randolph was, I don't know if you've been up north Lafayette, but there's quite a big sinkhole near the corner of Hayne Line and Lafayette.
Okay.
And the storm sewer that crosses under Randolph in that area feeds into that, and because of that sinkhole and the problems going on there, their water was not able to drain from North Randolph during that torrential rain.
Okay, all right. I wanted to, I'm glad to hear that it was something fascinating. And then finally, I just want to thank you for the capital improvement project where you summarized on your second page of your report. It's hard for me to keep all that straight, and so I really appreciate how you broke that down.
Oh, you're welcome. And I, as you can see, I just try to hold the most recent update, and then at some point, it will cycle off. But if there's more information you need, please let me know.
Sure, it's great. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for Alice? Couple of comments I'd like to make, Alice. Appreciate all the effort in this. Couple of things I would follow up on. Alderman Carper, the boil order was relative to one of those three main breaks where it was not able to be, the repair was not able to be made under pressure. So when the system is down like that, it would have been an isolated boil order for whatever impacted homes in that section of town would have been.
Okay, thank you.
The sweeper, I would also just comment there that they only operate on streets that have curb and gutter. It's part of the, part of that is to also take care of some stormwater inlets there that may be collecting with debris and things like that. But it's not, those do not usually run on streets that are considered rural sections or where there's no curb and gutter. And then the sinkhole on North Lafayette Street, for your information and the councils in general, that is on private property. That sinkhole is being perpetrated by a failure of some infrastructure that is not the city's responsibility. We're working with some of the affected homeowners and the property owner where the sinkhole's occurring, trying to get that remedied as quickly as possible. Any other questions or comments? All righty, hearing none. Thank you for the report, Alice.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to unfinished business now. Item number one, consideration to approve the purchase of a Volgslang rotary lobe sludge pump from Zimmer and Francion in the amount of $12,144 for the wastewater treatment plant. There's a memorandum in your packet from the Public Works Director. Alice, could you go over that for us, please?
Yes, this is a pump at the wastewater treatment plant that has been leaking sludge for quite a while now, and it was in the budget this year to be replaced. And Josh went out and found a replacement pump for the $12,144, which was under the budget amount, and is requesting that that be approved so that he can get that old pump out of there and clean up operations.
Okay, thank you. This was brought before the Public Works Committee here a week or two ago, and recommendation is to proceed. We'd entertain a motion to approve the purchase in the amount of $12,144.
Move to approve the purchase of the sludge pump?
Second.
It's moved and seconded to approve the purchase. Any discussion?
Your Honor, I just have one question.
Go ahead.
I just, I'm wondering the age of the current pump?
It was installed in 1999.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Vezzi?
Aye.
A. Carper?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
G. Carper?
Aye.
Brown Edwards?
Aye.
Moon?
Aye.
Wayland?
You're muted, Mike.
Aye.
All ayes.
All ayes.
Motion carried. Motion carried. Thank you. Item number two, consideration to approve the purchase of a Fairbank submersible lift station pump from Zimmer and Francion in the amount of $37,475 for the wastewater University Drive Lift Station, a backup pump there. There's a memorandum in your packet from the Public Works Department. Alice, could you go over that for us, please?
As you know, U Drive is one of our main lift stations, and currently there is only one pump in operation at that lift station. So were it to go down for any reason, we would be without pumps there. So this was a part of the fiscal year 2021 budget to purchase the backup pump for that pump station. Purchase price is $37,475 plus not to exceed $1,000 for freight, and we were asked for your approval to purchase this pump.
Thank you. We'd entertain a motion to approve the purchase from Zimmer and Francion for the submersible pump in the amount of $37,175 and freight not to exceed $1,000.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the purchase. Any discussion? Any questions for the Public Works Director?
I have a question.
Alderman Carper.
And I may be getting these goofed up because I'm looking at too much stuff I don't understand. But one of, I think it was this one said that the cost of installing it is not included?
I believe we're installing it.
Okay, that was my question. Is this something that staff can do, then?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
A. Carper?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
G. Carper?
Aye.
Brown Edwards?
Aye.
Moon?
Aye.
Wayland?
Aye.
Vezzi?
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion carried. Thank you. There is no other unfinished business this evening under new business item number one. Consideration to approve the Macomb Police Pension Fund Statement of Investment Policy Objective and Guidelines, updated May of 2020. There's a copy of the Statement of Investment Policy Objectives and Guidelines in your packet. This was discussed at their May 7 board meeting. I was on the, invited to attend that meeting and provide an update on the state police officers and pension investment program, the board that I sit on. And this was, this is a routine policy investment statement that the pension fund is required to give us notice of. We'd entertain a motion to concur with the Pension Fund Policy Objectives and Guidelines as dated in May of 2020.
Take the motion to approve the Macomb Police Pension Fund Statement of Investment Policy Objective and Guidelines, May 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded to concur. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, a question?
Mayor, Alderman Carper.
And I figured you'd be the one to ask since you're on this committee. Is this one of the things that might have some changes under the new legislation?
Absolutely. So the, I sit on the transition board for this fund at the state level. There was a 30-month timeline for transitioning into the new pension fund effective from the date of the enacting legislation, which was January 1. So part of this position I hold on the state board is to set up the foundation, hire all the participants, the executive director, corporate counsel for this fund, and eventually that all of these local investment decisions will be transferred to the state board. The local pension fund will still be in operation for approving disabilities and things of that nature, but all the investment policy will be transferred to the state board at the end of the transition period.
Okay, so this particular policy statement or the investment policy will be appropriate until that time that we transfer? Is that what you're saying?
That would be my opinion, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Cook?
Aye.
G. Carper?
Aye.
Brown Edwards?
Aye.
Moon?
Aye.
Wayland?
Aye.
Vezzi?
Aye.
A. Carper?
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Item number two, consideration to approve the engineering services proposal from Maur Stutz in the amount of $19,000 to update the 2017 Water System Facility Plan. There's a memorandum in your packet from the water plant manager, Mr. Cox, and I believe he's on the Zoom meeting with us. Kent, could you go over the memorandum, please?
Actually, you get me again.
Okay, I'm sorry, Alice. Go ahead.
You know, with all the work that has been done on the system over the past few years, the change in population affecting the water usage, looking at better ways to treat the water and to provide water to the city, we felt that it was important to do an update to this facility plan to reflect current numbers and current dollars so we know better what we're going to be planning for in the future so that we can get off of the IEPAs critical review list. Maur Stutz was the engineering firm that did the original, and so we're asking them to go back through and take a look and give us an updated plan.
Thank you, Alice. We'd entertain a motion to approve the proposal from, with Maur Stutz in the amount of $19,000.
Move to approve the proposal for updating the water plant.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Any questions for the Public Works Director?
I have a question.
Alderman Moon.
Does this mean that we're going to sometime in the near future make a decision on what direction we're going to head with this?
That's exactly what it means.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
G. Carper?
Aye.
Brown Edwards?
Aye.
Moon?
Aye.
Wayland?
Aye.
Vezzi?
Aye.
A. Carper?
My apologies. Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Item number three, consideration to approve amending the existing IMAG Corporation Engineering Agreement for the design of Dudley Street resurfacing to include the additional blocks from Jefferson Street to Grant Street for an added cost of $4,200 for a total engineering agreement amount of $30,200. There's a memorandum in your packet from the Public Works Director. Alice, could you go over that for us, please?
As I mentioned earlier, we had received that grant from the state for $370,000 for infrastructure improvements, and one of the areas that we're hoping to be able to use this money for is replacement of the Dudley Street water main. As you know, that's been kind of holding up, getting Dudley Street repaved because we don't want to repave it and then have to dig in it to replace the water main. And so by using those funds on the Dudley Street water main, we can get that done probably at least a year sooner than we would have been able to going through the CDVG grant application process. And there's also no guarantee that we'll get a grant for it, and that would delay it even further. So we're looking at about $300,000 for water main replacement. That leaves $70,000, and we want to apply that towards repaving the rest of Dudley.
Thank you, Alice. We'd entertain a motion to approve the additional agreement with IMAG in the amount of $4,200 for a total of $3,000, excuse me, $30,200.
Make the motion to approve the amended existing IMAG Corporation Engineering Agreement.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve. Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Carper.
And I think it's just because of the way it's written, my understanding was that we were, we were going to be repaving Dudley Street from Jackson to Jefferson. Is that correct?
Under the original plan, correct.
And so does this, does this extend the repaving from Jackson to Grant?
Correct, yes. Hopefully, money allowing.
Okay, so that cost will be, if we did Dudley from Jackson to Grant, will be $370,000?
No, $300,000 of the $370 would go towards the water main.
Okay.
We would apply the remaining $70,000 plus MFT funds towards the finished repaving of Dudley.
So what would be the cost for the repaving from Jackson to Grant?
That's a number we will have to get from IMAG once they're able to start this design.
Okay, so we're still not sure if we're going to be able to do that whole way. It may just be from Jackson to Jefferson?
Potentially, or, yeah, as far as we can get with that $70,000.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Can I ask, how many blocks of water main are we talking about?
Alice, isn't it from Jefferson to Franklin?
Jefferson to Franklin?
Right, and there's maybe one block that doesn't have water main in it, but...
Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
Okay, so just for clarification, the timing of this is that we anticipate, and we have the design done for repaving Dudley from Jackson to Jefferson Street, and we would anticipate going out for bids for that sometime this year. Is that correct, Alice?
Yes.
And then this engineering would get the rest of that project engineered for resurfacing all the way to Grant Street. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion this evening? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Brown Edwards?
Aye.
Moon?
Aye.
Wayland?
Aye.
Vezzi?
Aye.
A. Carper?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
G. Carper?
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Item number, there is no other new business, excuse me. We have John Bannon on the Zoom meeting with us. Give us a complete count census update, John. Unmute, John.
Thank you. Used to being there in person. Thank you, Scott. Just wanted to give a couple of brief updates on the census and things we've been doing. So the Macomb Census Complete Count Committee donated 2,500 reusable census bags. They're branded with the logo on those bags to Genesis Garden. The mayor, the mayor and Executive Director, John Curtis, did a video together, sort of celebrating that cooperation and collaboration. It's on the Downtown Development Facebook page. Please watch that. Please share it. I think, I think that both helps support people in terms of food security, and it reaches exactly the demographic that we want to reach, you know, those hard-to-count groups in the community. We'd like to continue that collaboration, and I think we will. Another, another effort that we're doing is that we will have someone at City Hall 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, that will be available by calling the Community Development Office, so 309-833-4944. And that person will be available to answer questions on the census, offer assistance with any concerns they have, as well as to help people fill it out if they feel more comfortable calling a local number. We just want to kind of continue the ball, continue to move the ball forward in terms of getting everyone in our community counted, and especially try to target those, those areas and those groups that haven't yet been counted, that are hard to count.
Any questions for John?
I have a question, Your Honor.
Alderman Vezzi.
John, first off, thank you for everything you've been doing. You've been doing a great job with the census, but is there anything that we as aldermen or the citizens can do to help expedite and get more people counted?
I think it's, it's just making it clear to all of your circles how important it is. You know, just make it part of your pitch. You know, you normally ask people about different things in the community. Ask them if they filled out the census. I talked to someone last week who hadn't filled it in yet, and, you know, I told them it's five minutes. It's not, it's not anything complicated. If you've lost a piece of paper, you can click, I don't have my census ID, and enter in your address. It's, it adds only a minute. It's six minutes instead of five minutes. It's still very easy, very painless process. Please share all the things. Please share all the things in your personal and professional social media about the census, the videos that we've put out, and just, just, you know, if you're involved in any clubs, if, or any service organizations, be they, whatever they be oriented towards, please just communicate it to the memberships, whether that be a church or a volunteer, you know, service, social service organization, or simply recreational. I think it's just getting the word out there to every single group. I think there are still some people who just haven't gotten around to filling it out yet, so just mentioning it would, would help.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Alderman Vezzi and the rest of the council, I would just double down on what John, Mr. Bannon offered here just a few moments ago. We'll, we'll get you a copy of the news release, but I think it's pretty significant what he announced, that we have a workforce person that will be devoting four hours a day, Monday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, right here in the Community Development Office, that, that folks who have questions about the census want, and again, I think it's important that we stress that they are in a position to assist them with filling the census form out over the phone, as the person were to get online and, and walk through it with them. I think that's a significant opportunity that we've been able to afford to be able to do to encourage folks to get on board with that. So again, that number is 309-833-4944. Anything else for Mr. Bannon?
Yes, Your Honor.
Alderman Carper.
I just would like to add that I called John last week. He had commented when we met two weeks ago that the Northeast Quad wasn't coming in very strong, so I called him last week. Came up with the idea to put up some banners. I offered the fencing there at North Prairie Avenue, the entrance of Prairie View, for a nice banner. I really could, and we also talked about a yard sign campaign. As I drive through my ward, I really could use a lot more yard signs. So I just want to tell you that we, we talked about a campaign that we can work on for the Northeast Quadrants in particular.
Okay, very good, thank you. Anyone else? All righty, thank you, John. Under automatic reports this evening, Alderman Moon.
No report.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Brown Edwards.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank all of the community leaders, that include you, Mr. Mayor, the County Board Chair, the Sheriff, the NAACP President, Western Illinois University's interim President, our Police Chief, OPS, and McDonough County, why, I did mention the sheriff, for giving a joint statement to give affirmation and admonishing the community leaders to speak out against the wrongdoings and recognizing that our silence is complicity. I agree with Dr. Abraham's new statement that he released today that we must speak out and act against the anti-black sentiments and actions, the injustices, discrimination, racism, and hate that plague our community, that anything that happens within our community also affects our university. I think we are in a very thankful situation that we are able to have nonviolent discussions here in our community, and I'm looking forward for that to continue to go on. I see that there are a lot of protests and rallies scheduled in the near future here in honoring of the death of Mr. Gregory Floyd, and I hope that those continue to be peaceful in our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Brown Edwards, and Alderman Carper.
Well, I think it's going to be your night for, for kudos, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo what Tammy said, and also add that I think you and your team have just done a phenomenal job with the publicity you've done on the effect of the pandemic here in Macomb. I know you have a big, you're the face of it, and I know you have a big team there, so I'm hoping that, that you will list your team members so I don't leave someone out. But you guys have just done a tremendous job on getting information out and making the community feel safer, and also you did a really great job on getting the Phase 3 Business Plan back up and running for people, so thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. You know, we're all one big team here, so you name it, anybody at City Hall's been part of it, so appreciate the, the, the opportunity to do it for everybody. Alderman Cook.
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Carper.
I just did want to add that we had a Looking for Lincoln Committee meeting past week, and there's been two, our Lincoln statue in August, so we'll have that to look for.
Okay, very good, thank you. Alderman Vezzi. I'm sorry, Alderman Carper, did you have something else? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, sorry, just saying thank you.
Okay, Alderman Vezzi.
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Wayland.
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ms. Scalf.
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Administrator.
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Counsel, I have several bits of information I'd like to share with you, and we'll start with public service announcement that you should have gotten from us, from the Water Treatment Plant. With so many buildings, particularly businesses, and other buildings, schools, things of that nature, that have been offline for the last several months, that would normally not have any decrease or noticeable decrease in their water usage, there's an issue with stagnant water in these particular buildings, so we refer you to the city's website to pick up on the PSA that talks about how you can flush your system. Now, just a reminder that if you live in a home and it's been, you've been naturally using water, there's absolutely no issues whatsoever, it's just for those buildings or premises that have been offline for the last several months. And again, that information is available on the city's website under public service announcements. Also like to share with you, and you may have seen it over the weekend, there was a news release, the Macomb Community Foundation has undertaken a grassroots effort at the suggestion of some local folks in the community to help support and raise money for local small businesses. The Macomb Foundation has agreed to be the intermediary for those donations, and those can be sent to the Macomb Foundation here at City Hall, 232 East Jackson Street. And again, that was a grassroots effort to try to support those locals, nonessential businesses, and mainly those businesses that have suffered because of the inability to be fully functioning because of the pandemic. And I'd like to report to you that just in the matter of a couple of days, around $3,500 has been raised for that fund, and folks making donations enjoy the tax deductibility by going through the Macomb Foundation, but it does not limit them on giving direction. So if you have a donation you'd like to make towards a certain business or entity, that can be done through that mechanism. And we thank the members of the Macomb Community Foundation, their Oversight Board, for agreeing to do that. Would also share with you the fact that we did issue a joint statement, I'll go over that, and I would like to read into the record in just a moment, but I also provided you with a copy of a letter that I sent to the local president of the NAACP, Mr. Byron Oden Shabazz, regarding not only the, the deaths of Mr. Floyd and Mr. Amory, but the other impact of the coronavirus on communities of color and, and poverty, not only here locally, but across the nation. I think I provided you with a copy of that letter as well. I would like to read, and it's been reported widely in media, but I would like to read it into the record, a joint statement issued by the city, the county, the McDonough County Chapter, the NAACP, Western Illinois University, the Macomb Police Department, the McDonough County Sheriff's Office, and the WIU Office of Public Safety that was issued last week on the 28th. "Like the rest of the world, our community watched in shock at the abhorrent police conduct that resulted in the death of Mr. George Floyd in Minneapolis earlier this week. Mr. Floyd's death is extremely disturbing. Police officers are trained to protect and serve, and to treat those that they serve with dignity and respect. The devastating treatment of Mr. Floyd was inhumane, cruel, and heartless. We stand behind Minneapolis Police Chief Armando's quick action to terminate the officers involved in Mr. Floyd's death. As community leaders, we must speak out against wrongdoings, and as our silence is complicity. We must be vigilant. We must ensure that our officers and our community leaders act with compassion and care for the people that they are entrusted to serve. Sworn police officers in Illinois are not taught maneuvers such as a knee hold that was used on Mr. Floyd. Deescalation and crisis intervention training are built into all of the city, county, state, and university police officers' training. We expect members of our area police forces and the members of the public to speak up when they witness any wrongdoing. We have an obligation to our residents to ensure their safety in their community and in their home. We have sworn duty to protect and to serve our residents and our guests, and we will. We, we are a small community. What happens in our nation affects our residents here. We will uphold our community's commitment to social justice and to equity, diversity, and inclusion, and we will ensure a community that is safe for all of our residents and our guests." And that's signed by myself, County Board Chairman Schwer, President Oden Shabazz, Dr. Martin Abraham, interim president of Western, Chief Kurt Barker, Sheriff Nick Pettigou, and Derek Quatz, interim director of WIU's Office of Public Safety. I would also report to you the latest information from the McDonough County Health Department. As of earlier today, a total of 91 cases have been confirmed here in McDonough County. They're reporting additional deaths for a total of 13 total deaths. Again, our condolences to those folks who have lost folks to this pandemic. They're also reporting that nearly half of those reported cases are in what is recovered state. That's all I have for you this evening. We would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Socket.
So moved and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, meeting adjourned, thank you.